Now called forward to January 15, 2018, meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:36 PM. I would like to show that the board is present with all members in attendance. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Ms. Harrell. May the state, the state of Texas, and the state of the nation be there by Ms. Mexico.
Please back. Father, we thank you for this wonderful day that you blessed us with. We thank you for our wonderful community, our state, and our country. We ask that you give us wisdom and discernment to make decisions that affect so many. We thank you for our wonderful teachers, our students, and the other educators and support staff that provide such wonderful care for our desert. We ask that you watch over the first responders and soldiers that are fighting abroad to keep us free. Again, in all we do, may we glorify you in Jesus' name, amen.
I pray the leaders to declare the United States of America to be a world which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. On the throne of God, I pray the leaders to be a nation one today, one in this world.
Out of tune with the judge's recognitions, we'll start with Ms. Lowe. Present recognition for Tavola Elementary.
Hello, good evening. Okay, first I'd like my staff members and Marcus to come up here, please. Claudia, I think I can say right over here. All right, I'm gonna start with Ms. Maddling. This is Ms. Carla, you may recognize her, she was here in the same spot last year. But when I think about our cafeteria, I can't think about calling someone else up here besides Ms. Carla, because she is the reason that that is the way that they are. She is them with a smile, with heart, and kids are always foot first. We love you, Ms. Carla. Stand by Ms. Carla. Ms. Claudia. Okay, our custodial staff, we have great staff at Tavola, but I had to bring Ms. Claudia Gonzalez today. She is the first one there. She doesn't say much, but she doesn't need to. She is calm and always willing to do absolute anything in some of the most busiest times of the school day, no matter what it is. Yes, ma'am, how can I help? Let me get it for you. And our kids see that, too. She is with that, that way with the kids and with the staff. And we just love having you as part of our school family. Oh, thank you. Fourth instructional paraprofessional, Ms. Amy Hamilton. She does a job that I would never do in a million years, and I'm so grateful that she is with us. She is in our Applied Skills Program. And those babies, she loves them with all her heart. And she does it with a smile on her face, and sometimes that's one of the hardest places to be. It's nonstop, I hardly ever get a break. And those kids love her, and that shows in everything that they do and that she does with them. She's part of the heart of that program and our school. Ms. Harvey, fourth grade, she is just a teacher leader on our campus. Her peers go to her for support, for questions, for help. We do weekly walks on the campus. I don't know that there's been almost any weeks that we don't go into your room, because everyone wants to see what she's doing. Both of the students with her peers, she has student teachers constantly, and they get a wealth of knowledge from her. She seeks out ways to work with students beyond just the academics. She really wants to get with them on their social side, behavior, family, to make sure that the whole trial is met. And that's what Tavola is about, and you embody that. This is why we're here. This is my good friend Marcus Ellis, and I wanted to bring him tonight. He's a fourth grade student. He is a very busy fourth grade student. He participates in UIL, in writing, and in oral reading. He's in robotics. He's also in our STEAM Academy, which is our GT program. So he stays very busy. And my favorite thing about Marcus is he gives Wolf Trax for good behavior. He saves those to read to myself and to the assistant principal, Ms. Young. And when he's reading to us, it has been known that the people outside of our office, he's drunk, because he is one of the most exciting readers to listen to. It's the best time of my day when he comes to read to us. Thank you, Marcus.
And next we'll have Mr. Jones from Valley Ranch Elementary School.
Good evening, board members and our superintendent. What a wonderful night. It was very hard to select just a few people out of many that deserve recognition on our campus. But without further ado, my staff members and our students will come up. They've been so excited. I really didn't tell them what it was about, but that we have special recognition. So with that being said, we'll first recognize Ms. Dana Milkovit. She works in our food service department, but not only does she make sure that our students are fed and ready for instruction, she always greets them with a kind word and a warm smile. Thank you, Ms. Milkovit. All right, next we have Mr. Larry DiMauro. Not only does Mr. Larry ensure that our school is beautiful each day for our students, but he does it with a smile. We can always call on him to come in and help us set up for anything that we do and make sure that our school is ready for instruction each day. Thank you, Mr. Larry. All right, and our teacher is Ms. Mary Davis. She leads one of the top fourth grade math teams in our district. Countless teachers credit Ms. Davis as helping them survive their first year of teaching, because she is such a leader. And we appreciate everything that she does each and every day for our students at Valley Ranch. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay, and we have Ms. Cherie Love. She's an instructional paralegal on our campus. And under that is flexibility is her biggest characteristic that I didn't have to say. I go to her at times when we need some coverage in certain places, and she always does it with a pleasant demeanor and a smile. And she is so kind to our students, and I appreciate everything that she do in those classes for our students. Thank you, Ms. Love. All right, we have Ms. Alyssa Byrd. She is a fifth grade student on our campus. She was actually the 2017 Arbor Day Poster Contest winner for New Caney ISD. She was also a state finalist and represented our district well. Her artwork is actually featured on some bookmarks that you can find throughout our libraries within the Houston area. And we are proud of Alyssa, of her accomplishments, and that she is a student at Valley Ranch Elementary. Thank you, Alyssa, for all that you do.
Thank you.
And next from Dogwood Elementary School, we have Mr. Hamilton.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize five wonderful family members of Dogwood Elementary. We'll start tonight with a teacher, Mr. Carazza McClellan. Carazza is one of those teachers that is never satisfied with the minimum. She always goes above and beyond the expectation for her students, her team, and her school. Even though she's a new candidate for Caney, she reaches out to coworkers and uses her experience to help them plan, obtain materials, and do whatever is needed to ensure their success in their classroom. Ms. McClellan is a writing teacher for the fourth grade of language students, and a tremendous challenge in and out of itself. In addition, she has also taken on the role of co-coordinator for the campus lighthouse team as part of the leader in the main program that we have installed in Dogwood. She is a campus cheerleader, encouraging students and coworkers, all of all, making herself continuously available to anyone that needs a hand. Carazza makes Dogwood a better place to be and does so with a smile. Next, we have one of our custodians, Manita Padilla. Manita is a valued member of the Dogwood staff. She is part of the morning opening team, hopefully still in to take care of the cafeteria during breakfast and lunch. She always has a smile on her face and is dedicated to the students of Dogwood. She excels in her duties while seeking to assist students, staff, parents, and administrators. She always responds quickly and immediately to our many requests to clean up trash, build, and other difficult issues that arise in classrooms. Even though she and her family are harbingers victims, she refuses to dwell on the situation, take time off, or let it change her attitude in time. Ms. Padilla is a wonderful daughter and a model of character. Next, we have our child nutrition manager, Persayne Silva. Ms. Silva is a huge asset to our family. She is quick to greet you with a smile and always willing to go above and beyond to provide anything that we need, either kitchen, cafeteria, or classroom. Although faced with many challenges associated with opening the district school, she manages her department with ease and efficiency. Ms. Silva, along with her team, are always quick to handle any sudden change or complications that arise. We're extremely fortunate to have her on our campus, and she is an amazing individual and leader. It's always a pleasure to work with her. Our paraprofessional is Fabiola Batista. Awesome, perfectionist, driven, loved, guiding unit of team. These are all words used by the Dogwood staff to describe her as our school registrar. Fabiola is a first-year registrar who strives for perfection. She's always looking for ways to improve her performance and provide the highest quality of data and information for Dogwood as well as the district. Ms. Batista refuses to depart from campus until her work is complete. She will leave no stone unturned to resolve a problem or an issue. She's eager to help others and seeks out ways to help others, even with the amount of her own work in the school registrar that seems to be overwhelming. Her smile is ever-present, and she is forever positive and pleasant to staff and parents alike. Ms. Batista is a loyal, dedicated member of our family, loved by all. We are blessed to have her on our campus. And then we have our students, Vanessa Hernandez. Vanessa is an outstanding student in her fourth grade of language program. She excels in all academic areas and is a true example of a student leader. Vanessa is an honor roll student and is also having perfect attendance for the fall semester. She's a member of the fourth grade UIL number sense team and works as a student office aide leader in her office during what we call quack time or intervention time. She always works to exceed expectations with helping her peers, completing their schoolwork, assisting her teachers for just participating in the school project. Vanessa is an authentic student leader.
Next, Mr. Holton, Dr. Shortstraw, will make the presentation.
All right, good evening. I thought I was going to special forget to do this, but it's an honor. In the state of Texas, the month of January has been set aside as School Board Appreciation Month, and it provides us the opportunity to truly thank our school board members who have devoted their time and effort into improving education in Texas public schools. As elected official, school board members are the voice of their communities, serving first and foremost in the best interest of our school children. School board members serve countless hours working to make public education the best and keen for every student. Our New Caney ISD school board has proven time and time again that they are committed to preparing today's students to be productive citizens and leaders of tomorrow. Being a school board member can often be a thankless job. However, tonight I take the time to thank each and every one of you for your dedication to making New Caney ISD the shining star in Texas education. Great leadership always begins with a willing heart, a positive attitude, and a desire to make a huge difference. That difference is making an invaluable impact on the lives of the students, teachers, staff, and community of New Caney ISD. Please join us as we stand and applaud. Thank you for all that you have done to help our kids be successful here at New Caney ISD.
Thank you very much. And I know I'll speak for the entire board. We appreciate all y'all's efforts. None of us up here do this to get a gift or something in January. We do it for the little ones that are here tonight. We appreciate all the teachers, cafeteria workers, janitors, administration, everybody that helps make this district great. Several of us on the board are a long time New Caney. Many of us bleed blue, sorry, which probably in the porter staff, look at the crosshairs. But we've been around New Caney our entire education, all the way through. I'm willing to say I think New Caney is probably the best district in the state of Texas. Appreciate all y'all's work. Thank you.
I have a prayer of the agenda of the superintendent's board. We'll start off with Chad Durfer, who served us on a long-range planning committee, and he's going to give the board a report from that committee and their findings. And I would like to say thank you to Mr. Durfer, as well as all of our members of the community who served and were at these meetings and took up a lot of information. So, Mr. Durfer, if you'd like to get started.
All right, thank you for having me. Okay, good evening, board. My name is Chad Durfer. I'm here on behalf of the New Caney ISD Long Range Facility Planning Committee. As a part of the committee, my role was to serve as the chairperson, which means I'm responsible for bringing the committee's recommendation forward to you, the New Caney ISD Board of Trustees. Tonight, I will provide this information and overview of the committee's activities. Do have slides, too, just so everybody knows. As the slide suggests, we will cover the following topics in tonight's presentation. The end result of the presentation will be the committee's recommendation for a long-range facilities plan. I will first, however, begin by explaining the purpose and method for how the committee reached consensus in identifying and prioritizing the items that are included in the long-range facility plan. As a committee, we start with the following purpose. The Long Range Facility Planning Committee will review facility conditions, school capacity, projected growth, and financial information in order to make recommendations for long-range improvements and needs to the Board of Trustees. To achieve the purpose of the Long Range Facility Planning Committee, we followed a well-defined process which played out over the course of eight meetings which took place in the past several months. In those meetings, we focused on three defining themes. These themes were aging facilities, evolving to a 21st-century learning environment, and growth. At each of the meetings, the committee followed a focused approach to each of the themed topics. This approach drove the committee's conversations and outcomes for each of the meetings. Finally, the committee used two meetings to gain consensus in creation of the recommended long-range facilities plan. Each of the meetings were full of activities. The initial meetings consisted of presentations from district staff and LAN on specific topics related to the themes of the long-range facility planning. These meetings and subsequent meetings included robust discussion about each of the topics. The committee provided feedback and considerations for the administration and consultants to review and incorporate in subsequent meetings. Several meetings also included facility tours. These tours were beneficial for the committee, and the participants were able to understand the conditions of several existing facilities in the district. The committee developed a list of consensus criteria which would serve as a driver for conversations about long-range projects and prioritization. This list included the following: long-term planning, parity, all students have an opportunity to be successful, focus on 21st-century learning environments, planning for growth, facilities support learning for all students, including a safe environment, fiscal responsibility, facilities that have a positive image, and on-time facilities. All right. In general, the long-term facility plan, the long-range facility plan, is a list which can be described by the following. This is a list of projects for consideration by the Board of Trustees. Some project descriptions are broad in nature, while others are specific. The list of projects is ranked by priority based on consensus by the committee. The projects listed can be associated with the consensus criteria that was developed by the committee. Finally, general timeframes have been associated with the projects based on their priority and the potential resources available to accomplish the project. The following slide will identify some of the top priorities that were identified in ranked order. This list identifies the top seven prioritized projects by the committee. This list is a mix of addressing growth in the district and some of the district's aging facilities. Throughout the process of the committee meetings, it was apparent that New Caney ISD is growing and will continue to grow in student population. As a committee, we understand that the biggest need for the district will be to address this growth in the coming years. To accommodate the growth, several of the top projects identified are associated with the consensus criteria of long-term planning, planning for growth, and on-time facilities. The committee also identified the need to prioritize projects which address aging facilities in the district, specifically the replacement of several existing facilities. Rationale for the projects at the top of the list included the current and projected condition of the facilities, the age of the facilities, the parity between the facilities, and others in the district. These projects identified are associated with the consensus criteria of long-term planning, parity, all students have an opportunity to be successful, focus on 21st-century learning environments, planning for growth, fiscal responsibility, and facilities that project a positive image. In total, 29 projects were identified and ranked. The Board of Trustees have provided the complete list for consideration. The complete list includes projects which fall under the themes of growth, aging facilities, and evolving to 21st-century learning environments. And that's it.
Any questions from the board? I personally would like to recognize the members of this committee that are here tonight. Ms. Jill Carlson is here. Please stand, Mr. Durfer, of course, Ms. Loicano, Ms. Heine, who else? Ms. Mays. All standing. Mr. Turner, Mr. Trout. I want to make sure I've got everybody. Ms. Loicano, we got you. So, thank each and every one of you for being a part of this committee and for all of your work that went into it. We do appreciate it. I speak for myself, as well as the administration in the board. Thank you for this work.
Thank you, good luck.
We'd also like to thank Layla, and we appreciate you guys' guidance on this and your organization. All right, now we'll have Ms. Oplina, a presentation regarding potential third high school planning process that's going on.
Good evening. As Mr. Franklin said, I'm here to give you an update on the planning process for the potential high school number three. And as I stated last month, all of this begins with the school district and the community that you serve. So everything that we've done, we want to make sure we're looking through the lens of serving your district and your community. So the first place we started was for a vision for the school and what those guiding principles were. And again, we started with, what does New Caney ISD believe? And so this is from the website, the statement about what New Caney ISD believes. And then the five points that are on the website as well, talking about transforming education, strong academics, quality teachers, community-focused programs, and serving the growing community. So the guiding principles that the group came up with are that "High school number three will be a student-centered culture of transformative innovation and professionalism, fostering pride in self, strong academics, and community. Righted by student-driven instruction, housed in modern, adaptable, and collaborative learning environments, supported by accessible and advanced tools of technology, responding to a growing community with educational leadership and extracurricular excellence." You'll notice that there's bold words. Those are words that kept coming up in the conversations that really focus on some of the strong points and things that are important to the district. Moving further into the planning process, as I spoke about last time, just wanted to give you a recap. This is the planning process. We work through these five phases. Some of them are happening at the same time. So really, we've been working through framework analysis and ideation over the last two months. And I wanted to acknowledge all of those that have participated in this. So we're not just sitting in a room by ourselves and coming up with this. We're getting a lot of participation from the staff of the district, making sure that we understand what the needs are from a high level all the way down to a very detailed level. This is a process snapshot of what we've done so far. There's been a series of meetings. We've had three visioning meetings, and those were the three meetings that we used to come up with those guiding principles that I just shared with you. Two board updates, and this is the second update with you guys. Over the holidays, there's two weeks that were holidays, but I will say that part of the programming process, we sent some surveys out to the different departments ahead of the holidays. So I'm sure they were all thinking about all those over the holidays, maybe just a little bit. So that when we came back, you can see the week after the holidays was packed with three days of meetings. And that's where we collected that information, further questioned, and I'll go into that a little bit further, and we completed visioning meeting number three. This is just showing a snapshot of the surveys. In order to be efficient, we did a lot of having everybody think on In order to be efficient, we did a lot of having everybody think on their own and then come send their information back to us, and then we clarified information and worked through them, worked through it with them. As I stated, we had three days and 12 meetings. And so, those meetings consisted of everything from administration, athletics, fine arts, core curriculum, non-science, science, you name it. We met with everybody that we could, and this was to get a high-level look at what are the needs, what are the programs, and what are the things that we need to have in this building? The next steps for the process, as you can see, we're going to continue into programming. So, we did that first initial programming phase to get some good information from a high level. We're going to continue over the next couple of weeks to dive deeper into that. There will also be some tours to just look at other facilities and see if that's answered any questions, verify some things for those involved. And then we'll be working towards getting our planning documents together by early February, and we're doing all of this ahead of, well, simultaneously while you guys are working through the potential bond call date. We're working on our side, making sure that we're aligning the expectations of the high school with the overall goals of the bond as well. And that concludes the presentation. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Out of four on the agenda's open forum, I didn't have anybody sign up for that. Out of five on the agenda's closed meeting, the board will not meet closed meeting under authority of Texas Government Code Section 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation. Any action as a result of a closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes and opens meeting. Time is 7:08 PM. Board, in this closed meeting at 7:50 PM, we now reconvene and open session. Out of six on the agenda's reports of the board members. Out of seven on the agenda's consent count, considers consideration minutes, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing ports, consideration of personnel ports, and consideration of designation of HR staff members eligible to request to review video recording of self-contained classroom by other special education center. Are there any questions or discussions? Is there a motion approved item on the consent count? Motion been moved to second. You may move to business. Is there any further discussion? All is fair to say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. Out of made on the agenda's consideration of renovation of athletics offices in the building at Don Ford Stadium in the bond 2015.
Yes, sir. This team orders to renovate the current athletic performance office. We're going to make that a good space for Mr. Gates and his staff, Dean Murray's going to be joining him over there, just to be graphics and planning. We're also going to renovate the New Caney High School baseball locker room throughout their area, as well as make a space for the district's homeless closets, helping cancel all the stuff, so that way they have easier access to going and out, you know, maybe rather a little more assistance, so they don't just walk through the front door or something. So, as I touched on, that whole building, those three areas specifically, if the updates do have all of some storage in the back, for some of the athletic supplies, strike supplies, everything that's in there exists.
Has I got all the stuff up?
You got that, you're excellent.
You got tomorrow?
He's waiting for this.
Any questions or discussion? Is there a motion approved for renovation of former athletics offices at Don Ford Stadium in the bond 2015? All is fair to say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. Out of nine on the agenda's consider and discuss a potential resolution and conduct a public hearing pursuant to Texas Government Code 180.007 for the head football coach and football coordinator positions presented by Mr. Franklin.
In your board information, you have copied the resolution to increase the compensation for the district's two head football coaches and four football coordinators. The administration asks that you approve the resolution for excess compensation payment.
Was there a discussion or closed meeting? Is there any further questions or discussion? Is there a motion approved for the resolution for the head football coach and football coordinator positions?
Now, would the New Caney District School Board approve an excess compensation payment to the former employees? Ray Vinton, head football coach, of $10,000; Jim Holly, head football coach, of $10,000; Joshua Potter, football coordinator, of $5,000; Blake Ware, football coordinator, of $5,000; Dougal McDougal, football coordinator, $5,000; and James Billy Russell, football coordinator, of $5,000. These payments are being made for the public purpose of employee retention in order for substantiating similar positions to pay in a like and fair manner. The funds for this increase will come from the general budget and will become part of the employee's salary for the 2017-2018 school year.
Motion been moved to second. All is fair to say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. Out of ten on the agenda's consideration of superintendent's employment contract. Are there any discussions related to the superintendent contract? Is there a motion approved the superintendent's employment contract?
I make a motion to accept the superintendent contract as written with the addition of one more year to June 30th, 2021.
Motion been moved to second. All is fair to say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. If there is no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 7:55 PM.